Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Information on how to watch, attend, and participate, as well as agendas, minutes, and recordings can be found on Broomfield's website at broomfield.org/councilmeetings. The public may also participate in public comment either in person or by calling 855-695-3744 and pressing *3 to be placed in the queue for comment. Screeners will ask callers for their first and last name and the agenda item the caller would like to comment on. If you'd like to speak on more than one item on tonight's agenda, you'll need to press *3 each time to be placed back in the queue for comment. Public comment will be limited to 90 minutes total per item. The first 1 through 15 participants have three minutes to speak. The next 16 through 25 have two minutes. And if time remains, the next 26-plus participants in the queue have one minute to speak. For our hard-of-hearing residents present, we have wireless headsets available in the back of the council chambers with our AV team. The city council regular meeting is called to order. Councilmember Ward will be arriving later in the evening because he is being honored by the RTD Board of Directors for receiving second place in their recent bus rodeo competition. So he drove his bus through an obstacle course. And Councilmember Leslie is attending remotely. A quorum of the council is present. So will everyone please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. In an effort to keep order for tonight's meeting, I ask council members to limit their comments to five minutes. If a council member is given an opportunity to speak for a second time, they should limit their communications to two minutes. We'll plan on a 10-minute break at approximately 8:00 p.m. We'll begin with council's review and approval of this evening's agenda. Council may add or remove items from the consent agenda or council may revise the order of business for the meeting. Are there any changes to the order of business? Mayor Protem Schaaf?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to... 7E. I would like to move 7E to the consent agenda, please.
Okay, so Mayor Protem Schaaf has offered to move 7E, the delegating penalty assessment to the Broomfield Public Health Violation of the Protection Act First Reading to the consent agenda. Are there any objections? Seeing none, we'll move that to the consent. And are there any objections to this agenda being approved as modified? All right then, this agenda is approved. The only item under petitions and communications this evening is a proclamation declaring November 2024 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in Broomfield. Will the staff representatives here to accept the proclamation please come and meet Mayor Protem Schaaf at the podium? And thank you all for joining us this evening. I'll summarize the proclamation, then I'll turn it over to our representatives for comments. This proclamation states that according to the Centers for Disease Control, lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer deaths among men and women in the U.S. and Colorado, accounting for more deaths than colon, breast, and prostate cancers combined. Between 2017 and 2021, Broomfield saw 145 new lung cancer cases and 96 deaths. Smoking is the primary cause, with radon as the second-leading cause, and lung cancer is preventable. Residents can take steps to protect themselves and their loved ones. The city and county of Broomfield is committed to promoting early detection, prevention, and reducing exposure to tobacco and radon. Therefore, the mayor, as mayor, I hereby declare and proclaim November 2024 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in the city and county of Broomfield. Would our representatives like to introduce themselves and make any comments?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and Council, Jason Valling, Public Health Director, and I'm going to let my team members make the comments.
Thank you, Director Valling.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Allison Long, and I am with Broomfield Public Health, and I am here with Adrian Hollins and Mike Soltar. Thank you for this opportunity to remind our residents that lung cancer is preventable and that there is a number of things our residents can do to protect themselves. Broomfield Public Health uses a comprehensive approach to reducing tobacco use in our community, including efforts to prevent youth from starting in the first place, encouraging those who do smoke to quit, and reducing exposure to secondhand smoke. A reminder that the most important thing a person can do to prevent lung cancer is to not start smoking or quit if you do smoke. The Colorado Quit Line at 1-800-QITNOW offers free coaching over the phone by text and includes free quit medications like the patch and the gum. And it's important to note that a person's chance of quitting successfully increases substantially if they do use medications and also get support in the form of counseling or help from a healthcare provider. We wanted to point out that additional resources are listed on our website at broomfield.org/quitnow, including how to get screened for lung cancer if you are over the age of 50 and have a history of smoking. And so now Mike would like to add a few things about radon, which is the second-leading cause of cancer.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Mike Soltar. I'm the Environmental Health Manager for Broomfield Public Health. So one of the reasons why we really focus on radon is, Allison said, it is the second-leading cause of lung cancer. And as part of our efforts to help mitigate that, we during January this past year actually participated in handing out radon test kits for free to residents of Broomfield. We have received a grant to do that again this coming January for Radon Awareness Month, so that will be available. And then we also work with our environmental health specialists to connect people, if necessary, to low-interest loans and payment systems so that they can put radon mitigation systems in their houses.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to provide any remarks? We'll move to public comments. We take public comment on every agenda item. So if anyone would like to be heard on this item, please come up to the podium. I don't see anyone online. Questions from, comments from council are next. Does any member of council have any questions or comments? Don't see any. Well, thank you all for joining us this evening and for bringing awareness to this important issue. Have a good night. Before we dive into council member reports, I have some exciting news to share that this is yet another example of Broomfield's ongoing commitment to intentional, thoughtful, and successful development. I was absent from last Tuesday's meeting in order to accept the 2024 Economic Development Council of Colorado's Eddie Award for Large Community of the Year. This prestigious award honors exceptional economic development, workforce development, planning, and our achievements throughout the year. We've invested in long-term assets and amenities while implementing targeted strategies that foster business growth, attraction, and job creation. The most recent award, along with Broomfield being named Money Magazine's fourth healthiest place to live and being ranked first among other Colorado communities on Livebility's 2024 list of the top 100 best places to live, it gives us much to be proud of and celebrate. A special shout-out to our Economic Vitality Team, CMO, our City Manager's Office, Community Development, and our workforce teams for their continued pursuit to drive Broomfield into the future in a developmentally and fiscally sustainable way. And this award is really cool. This is our award. Large community is defined as populations over 60,000. So we beat out a lot of our neighbors. So yay us! So does any member of council have any updates for us? Councilmember Lim?
Yes, I had the opportunity to attend the Broomfield Out Loud showcase on Friday, and I wanted to congratulate the Broomfield storytellers and thank them for sharing their stories. The stories were ones of resilience and enthusiasm from Broomfield. It was a wonderful showcase. And if you didn't get to attend the showcase, but you'd like to see some of the visual artwork and other information from the storytelling, you can do so at the Depot Museum or on a display in the library. There is also a workshop on creative storytelling on October 26th that you could register for at broomfield.org/experience. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Henkel?
Thank you. I concur with Councilmember Lim. It was a beautiful night of storytelling, and I know that it was two years in the making. And so I just want to thank our staff and those people that participated in that event. It was something that I had never seen before, and I felt like it really engaged our community. And it was really powerful, and it was well-attended. So thank you again, staff. The second thing that I'll mention is that our metro area county commissioners met last Friday, and we solidified our 2024 to 2025 priorities. I was chair this past year, and I'm moving to Meredith's chair while Denver County is going to take over his chair and Douglas County as vice chair. Part of our metro area county commissioners is that we get together once a month to talk through any sort of issues that we are having and work regionally, whether that is on funding and/or federal advocacy or state level or local levels. There are ways that Denver, for instance, is receiving dollars, federal dollars, for their unhoused population. And so Boulder and Denver and other entities in the metro area are working on sharing those dollars. So we should have an update soon on that. Our priorities for 2024, 2025 will be health, which is housing with a focus on the unhoused and services, state hospital, air quality, and migrant services, safety, emergency preparedness, wildfires, address violence and domestic terrorism, organized violent groups or political violence. Our third one is economic development. So any sort of workforce, apprenticeships, youth engagement, newcomers. And then also, our fourth one is transportation. And so we have seven entities that are a part of this program and provided feedback for those priorities for next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem Schaaf?
Thank you, Mayor. So this next Monday, October 28th, will most likely be the last Rocky Flat Stewardship Council meeting. There may be some executive session or executive committee meetings following that, but this will be the last one. It'll take place via Zoom online, and it'll be on Monday, October 28th at 8:30 p.m. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council member updates? All right. We'll now continue with general public comment. So this is an opportunity for the public to comment on matters other than what's on the agenda. So if you'd like to speak in general, please make your way up to the podium. State your name and neighborhood for the record and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and Council, John Ewalt Pinnacle North. I have asked in previous council meetings if DA Mason or a representative from his office would be willing to share with Broomfield how they are advancing public safety in Broomfield. It was stated at previous council meetings that representation from the DA's office would be here tonight to answer questions about the budget requests for DA services, specifically why the cost to Broomfield for DA services are going up to $5 million while the number of crimes requiring prosecution is declining. We should be seeing a reduction in cost, not an increase in the current budget. Unfortunately, I don't think we are going to get the explanation from the DA's office that we are due, and I am certain that no one on this council is willing to hold up passing the entire budget for this one issue, and I would not ask for that. So is the DA's office or someone or representative from his office here to represent their budget request?
I'm going to let Ms. Rogers address that because we did talk about it. Mr. Ewalt?
Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council, DA Mason could not make tonight's meeting. He is actually at a meeting in another jurisdiction in the 17th Judicial District. I do have information from Adams County about the budget. As you know, we make our budget request earlier than Adams County. We do have revised numbers. I'll bring that up later up in the evening. DA Mason is able to make council's meeting on December 3rd, and we're still working on that scheduling.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you. When it was time for the DA to ask the council to support his desire of adding an issue to the ballot to allow him to run for a future third term, he had plenty of time to be here. That issue was passed by this council unanimously and with no questions, and it is now on the ballot as Item 7B. So please think about how the DA is treating Broomfield and vote accordingly. Completely unrelated, I would like to thank some members of staff that have been extremely helpful and patient in answering my questions about the utility rate changes, particularly Jennifer Hoffman, Ken Rutt, Graham Clark, David Acevedo Yates, Anna Burton Zetti, Jeff Romine, and Katie Allen. There are many others, but these people in particular have been willing to answer any question I had. I may have more to say when we get to the second reading of the ordinance, but I wanted to publicly express my thanks to them as individuals and not globally as staff. I appreciate the time you all spent answering my questions and the transparency that finally led to understanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill Cruthers. I'm from Northmore. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council. I just have one question. It's on the single-hauler trash issue. I read an article, I believe it was yesterday, that said that the city of Fort Collins, they did kind of their first review. And one of the things that came up was that the city or the Trash Service Republic is going to be giving back to the city of Fort Collins $1.35 for every household to take care of administrative costs, basically. And so my question here is, Waste Connections going to be doing that for Broomfield also? Are you there going to be kicking back, for lack of a better word, money to Broomfield to supplement, to allow for administrative costs? Because my understanding was you're hiring someone to do that, actually two people. So I'm just curious if there's something in the contract that you'll be getting money back from Waste Connections.
Well, Mr. Cruthers, I'll direct you to the back of the chambers where Allison Harvey is, so she can get you an answer. You can go back and talk to her.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to be heard in general public comment? I don't see any online, so we'll move on. So the 2024 Third Quarter Expense Report for elected officials was provided on this evening's agenda under reports. We'll now proceed with public comments, starting with in-person. If there's anyone who'd like to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. Don't see anyone. We'll now continue with the report section of the agenda. City Manager Hoffman, do you have a report?
I do not.
Thank you. City and County Attorney Rogers, do you have a report?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So council's consideration of the consent items is next. Earlier this evening, Mayor Protem Schaaf requested that Item 7E be moved to the consent agenda. The clerk will read all of the consent items by title, and there'll be one opportunity for public comments and council questions and comments. Will the clerk please read Agenda Item 6A, 6B, and 7E by title?
6A, approval of minutes from the October 1st, 2024 Special Meeting and the October 8th, 2024 Regular Council Meeting. 6B, Resolution Number 2024-160, Approving the Revised All-Hazard Emergency Operations Plan, EOP. 7E, Ordinance Number 2258 to amend Broomfield Municipal Code Title 8 regarding the enforcement of the Food Protection Act, First Reading.
Thank you very much. We'll now proceed with public comments on these items, starting with in-person. If anyone would like to be heard, please make your way up to the podium. Don't see any online. Next is questions from council. Does any member of council have any comments on these agenda items? Councilmember Lim?
I had my questions answered earlier about the Revised Emergency Operations Plan, but I did just want to comment that I appreciated that we have that Emergency Operations Plan updated. I know it took a little time and effort to get all the, for on our part to get it updated. It's a document that had not been updated since 2013, which considering that we have had emergency situations and some near misses, that was very necessary to update that. So I wanted to thank the people who put all the effort into doing that update. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments from council on consent? Is there a motion by council that Consent Items 6A, 6B, and 7E be approved? Councilmember Henkel? Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Winn?
Seconded.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Leslie, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All council members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. And that passes unanimously, nine to zero. Moving on, our first item under action items this evening are the Proposed Revised 2024 Budgets for Broomfield and Borough, the Reposed 2025 Budgets for Broomfield, Borough, and Arista Local Improvement District, and ordinances on utility rates and stormwater enterprise. These items all relate to the budget, and therefore, we'll review them concurrently, which means we'll have one staff presentation followed by an opportunity for public comment and an opportunity for Council Borough, ALID, and others to discuss before voting. Before we proceed, we will convene meetings of the Broomfield Urban Renewal Authority and the Arista Local Improvement District. The meeting of the Broomfield Urban Renewal Authority is called to order. I'll note that all members of the authority are present except for Member Law Evans, who is excused this evening. I'll now call to order the meeting of the Arista Local Improvement District, and I'll note that all members are present. I'll declare the public hearing for the two ordinances open. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize. I just want to correct, though, that it says all members are present, but Authority Member Ward is not, so for the record.
Thank you for noting. And good evening, council and community. This is a long-awaited meeting, and I'm grateful to our team for the effort and work and outreach and engagement that has taken place over the last six-plus months and grateful for the council's continued curiosity to really fully understand this budget. I'm going to turn it over to Graham Clark, the Director of Finance, and David Acevedo Yates. Our two champions that have brought a new light to our finance and our budgeting process, and for that, I'm very grateful. Gentlemen, please introduce us to this item and walk us through, please.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, David Acevedo Yates, Deputy Director of Finance. First, thank you to all the staff around Broomfield. Some are here representing their departments. It was a real collaborative effort to bring this budget together this year. Next slide, please. Tonight, we are here to present the 2025 Budget Resolution and the Third Revision to the 2024 Budget. We will be asking for council vote on those resolutions tonight. We will also be completing the second reading and requesting a vote on the Enterprise Rate Ordinances. Upcoming, as you can see at the bottom there, we'll have, sorry, we'll have an amendment coming December 3rd, which will be grants-focused. Next slide, please. Here, we highlight the major changes for 2024. The biggest pieces being the gap funding for the Harvest Hill Project, which is $2 million, and that comes from funds that have been collected and are dedicated specifically towards housing. And also, the increase to inmate health and mental care, which adds $943,000. And that is a contracted service which we are required to provide. And then you'll see additional highlights on the slide. Next slide, please. For 2025, this timeline highlights some of the major milestones in the budget process. As you can see, we have many points of input and many points of contact with departments throughout the year. That helps us shape the budget and helps us in determining our priorities moving forward. Next slide, please. Here, we have the four buckets by which we align the budget process with financial sustainability and resilience in mind. This is how we prioritize the budget for the fiscal year to really look at the needs and priorities of Broomfield. We collaborate with departments who identify their needs and how those needs fall into these buckets. From there, we can determine which items we can move forward with through the budget process. Next slide, please. Here, we call this our highlight slide, but the reality is this is more of a results slide. This is truly the results of the repeatable prioritization process of the budget. As I've mentioned, these are items that are brought forth by departments, and we work with them to identify how we can move forward and how we can meet those needs in the next year. Next slide, please. On the revenue side of 2025, we are expecting an overall decrease of 2% across all revenue streams. This is primarily driven by no new ARPA revenues coming in 2025. I will provide a further update on ARPA in just a few slides. But you'll see, even though we're expecting an increase on the property tax and sales tax, other items are what drive the decrease in projected revenue. Next slide, please. For personnel, here are some of the additions we're making for 2025. Some of these FTEs will be covered by dedicated revenue streams, and the others are priorities that have been identified by departments. And again, we are able to support those in 2025 and moving forward. Next slide, please. Our Capital Improvement Plan next year includes major pieces for the water tanks, wastewater treatment plan, and street maintenance. Within transportation, we've included $8 million in street sealing and management, which will help improve streets around Broomfield. Next slide, please. If we look at the CIP plan by priority level, we try to balance these four prioritization buckets based on the current and future needs of Broomfield. Here's a summary of those results of that process. Again, we collaborate with departments to determine how their needs fit into these buckets, and that helps us make those strategic decisions moving forward. Next slide, please. As we look at the balance of new assets versus replacement and rehabilitation within our CIP plan, we make intentional decisions based on the data and priorities for what this balance needs to look like from year to year. So again, working within our departments and identifying what their needs are and what the needs of the city are. Next slide, please. Related to ARPA, we remain on track to have funds encumbered by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026, which is in line with the requirements of that funding. Next slide, please. These are the summaries of the revenues and expenditures by each Urban Renewal Authority. And so we provide these as part of our budget process. And here, you'll be able to see them broken out. Next slide, please. Lastly, the Arista Local Improvement District budget, which we also build as part of our budget process. We present that here for you all to review. And next, I'll be passing the remainder of the presentation to Graham Clark, Director Graham Clark, to cover the enterprise funds. Thank you.
Good evening, Graham Clark, Finance Director, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the council. A major part of the overall budget is the enterprise funds. This has been several years to get to this point tonight, which we're excited about. Next slide? This is the proposal before you tonight. If you remember, billed revenue increases are evaluated annually as part of the budget development process to ensure that the projected revenues match the expenditures. We have a repeatable process, which will be reviewed, and recommendations will be brought forth to council each June as part of the budget process. Of note, we will be starting the process of bonding this coming August of 2025. We'll start getting prepared for the sale in January of 2026 to fund the water tanks and the wastewater expansion project. The action tonight will make that possible. Next slide? We had some questions around apartment complexes over the course of the last several months. We wanted to put this on here and in the slide deck just for reference. Next slide? We will continue to show this slide in the coming years as it shows Broomfield's utility bills are still below the average of the surrounding communities. We have started the process of creating the most comprehensive assistance program in the We have started the process of creating the most comprehensive assistance program in the area, which Vivy will discuss with you later tonight. Next slide. So this is our estimation for future years in the water fund. It is important to council understand the many variables that go into the rates that may change these numbers and ultimately probably will. They include precipitation, inflation in CIP projects, development revenue, grant revenue, customer growth and more. The water system has specific costs of operating for providing this good quality drinking water. And the amount of revenue necessary to offset these expenditures is what we're requesting in the form of rates tonight. Next slide. Similarly, for the sewer fund, we have projected revenue and expenses out till 2029. Again, we've been very intentional this year's budget development in coordinating the timing of the upcoming bond issuances with the necessary rate increases. Next slide. You may also remember in late September, we received new information from the Moody's Rating Agency. They've upgraded CCOB's general obligation bond along with the sewer bond with consideration of the water bond as well. Their upgrade of the sewer and potential water bond is in anticipation of these approved rates tonight. Next slide. Also included in Moody's report, Broomfield did receive a high score in governance. This is the financial management of the enterprise funds. Next slide. This upgrade, if you remember, will help CCOB pay less interest over the life of the 2026 bonds, which is generally about 20 years. Moody's Rating Agency, which is an unbiased third party, views Broomfield as having prudent financial management with a forward looking view. Next slide. As we mentioned, on October 1st, we will begin quarterly updates to council beginning in April. Finance will provide updates on the assistance program and the utilization of that. Quarterly updates on revenues and expenditures, along with precipitation, customer usage and any bond related updates. Next slide. So the proposed 2025 budget along with ordinance number 2253 and 2255 are before you tonight for your final adoption. Thank you.
Next is public comments. If anyone would like to be heard on these items, please make your way to the podium. State your name and neighborhood for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council, John E. Walt Pinnacle North. A couple of questions, I guess, to start with. On the slides that showed the fund balances for enterprise fund, it shows a negative balance in 2028 and 2029. I'm assuming that means that was with the current utility rates and not the proposed utility rates. If it's proposed, then we have way more problems than we're actually going to solve tonight. And then on to the, just the comments on the budget. Mayor Protem, last month, maybe, maybe the month before, you made a comment about that we're, we are tightening our belts. I assume you were referencing council in Broomfield. Can you demonstrate where? I don't see it in the budget. Costs continue to go up, expenditures continue, the increase in expenditures continues to outpace any increases in revenue. And that's been happening that way for many, many years. At some point, we need to start cutting costs and it seems that no one is willing to do that. So you as council set the direction for the budget. I know you're not responsible for the actual line items in the budget. But the direction you're setting is to spend, spend, spend and not cut anywhere. So I ask again, where is the belt tightening? Because I'm not seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to be heard? All right then. Questions from Council Borough and ALID are next. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion and the time to introduce amendments and state positions for or against these items is later. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Lim.
When Mr. Clark was referring to the factors that go into the budget that are variable. He referred to precipitation in the enterprise, water enterprise funds. So we had some data recently at the beginning of October that the water usage this year was up 26.4% year over year. What, now it was my understanding at one time that that meant that we would have more revenue. So will that be a end of the year factor in whether we come out somewhat more ahead than we anticipated in our projections? Or is that usage factor not as significant as we might think?
Councilmember Lim, thank you for the question. What I would say is we'll definitely, if those numbers stay true over the course of the remainder of the year. It should help us next year as we evaluate in the spring where we ended for 2024. However, the usage doesn't always mean dollars. So it generally does, but there are times where you might hit a certain, everybody hits a certain usage, but it doesn't go into the top tiers. And that would be less revenue than you would maybe expect. So it might be less than that 26% that you just mentioned. But in general, which we'll look at in February and March when we get the final numbers, we should be coming in a little bit better than expected.
Would it be possible when we get the April update to have a breakdown of the, of the water sales revenue? So it seems like any of the data that we looked at in the, in the memo or the spreadsheets referred to water sales revenue, which would include both the usage and the flat rate. And it was emphasized so much to us that, you know, the tiered increase that we had previously done was not significant enough. We needed to raise the flat rate. So would it be possible in our update to see a breakdown of how that sales revenue comes in with that usage and flat rate?
Yes, that's certainly possible. 2024 is what we'll be looking back at that won't have that high flat rate on there yet or the higher flat rate. So it won't be exactly what we're looking forward to and when that's more of a balanced revenue between both the flat rate and the usage rate. 2024 won't have that, but we can certainly provide what you've asked.
Okay. I, it would be helpful to me going forward, I think. Anyway, that's possible. The, so this year, staff chose not to give us the second budget amendment. And, but the memo said that it kind of did a look back and said, we feel that that three amendment process is best. And so I'm wondering, going forward now, are we going next year? Are we going to see that three amendment process for the budget?
Yes, what we've designed this year is what we intend to keep. It's been very, very, very helpful for staff. In that before, when we were doing the amendment, we were doing the amendment and a lot of the budget development at the same time. This has been really helpful to alleviate that second amendment, which was usually mid-year. The reality is that we didn't use a lot of what we added in that second one. In fact, last year, we didn't use any of the additional amount that we added. So we don't feel like that's necessary. We feel like we can get that done in the current three amendments.
The other thing, there's a focus in the next fiscal year on trying to increase the number of grants that Broomfield would receive. Would it be possible in the data that's presented to us to more clearly indicate the grants that we are receiving? It's hidden in there, you know, in the, okay, it comes in as revenue this place and expensive. But it, it's given that we were told that we're going to make an attempt to, you know, where feasible to apply for more grants. Is there any way you could present that more clearly in the budget?
Certainly, we also have that broken out in a slide that we can provide later on after the meeting. But it has been a focus. Not only will it be a focus of next year, but we've also focused it on this year quite a bit. And we've, we've seen some progress in that area. So, but we are able to provide that.
Okay, thanks. Those are my questions.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I second Councilmember Lim's request for the additional transparency on those particular things. Couple of questions. Our tap fee, I know we're not proposing to raise it this year. Can you tell me how it rates comparative to other jurisdictions?
Yes, Councilmember Mark Schulz. We did increase, we do intend to increase the tap fees or the license fees by 4% this year. That's a CPI number that we intend on increasing it each year. In regards to the question of how we compare to other cities within the area. We were extremely low a few years ago and we moved those up and now we're probably middle to top. Somewhere probably about 75 percentile up there.
Okay, I know we've gotten a lot of resident questions about why development isn't paying for the water rate increases rather than the residents. And I know we saw a hit on our tap fee revenues because of the downturn due to the interest rates. What are we, are we seeing that rebound yet? Are we seeing additional development come back with the interest rates being cut? And what are we anticipating? Imagine we haven't seen that yet, but what are we anticipating going forward?
We've not seen that yet. And in talking to many of our planners, we may not see that until a year from now. There's, there's quite a bit of a lag, so we don't necessarily expect that even to come in in 2025.
That makes sense. And then one quick question on the budget, in fact, to the slide that's up here right now, actually. I know with our AECOM consultant, we talked a lot about putting money into the preventive maintenance. And so I'm looking at the CIP numbers in both the water and on the sewer that's on the, in our memo. Those numbers jump around a lot. Kind of curious as to why, like, and why the big jump in 2029? Both, both water and sewer has a significant increase in the 2029 budgets. Sewer also has a big jump in 2026. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yes, so when we look at the CIP in 2026, that includes a lot of the wastewater expansion programs, so that does show up in the CIP line item. Also in 2029, we have some larger CIP items for water and wastewater. And likely in 2029, you can see that that's projected to be negative. We will likely be doing a bond again in 2029 to help pay for Phase Two of the wastewater expansion program and additional water items.
So the numbers that are there in the plan, on the wastewater, my understanding on the wastewater treatment facility as well as the water tanks, we're bonding those expenses.
That's correct.
So we, I guess I'm not understanding why we're seeing such a large amount out of the budget as a cash amount out of the budget if we're doing that as a bond.
It just shows up in the CIP. So it's a capital improvement project. It's funded differently, but it still shows up in the same line item as all the other capital improvement projects.
But we're not seeing an offsetting revenue. If, that makes sense if we have to pay for it, but if, if the bond revenue came in as a revenue, why, why aren't we seeing that in the revenue portion of it?
We will be seeing that in the revenue portion also. That's not included up there, but we definitely rest assured the, the amount that we get in revenue is the amount that then goes out for the, the bond.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council member questions? Mayor Protem Schaaf.
Thank you, Mayor. So I do have a question. So I asked this a little bit this last time that we talked about this. So in the last three years, staff and council has moved forward with a policy where any funding requests requested not categorized by a mandate, critical need or obligation, but necessary to provide current ongoing programs and services would be defined as this other category for funding consideration. When staff was looking at this other funding category, how did staff design this framework and how is equity considered in this framework?
So the other, probably could use a better name. I will, we'll work on that next year. That being said, the other is like, for instance, it's pavement management. It's just things that aren't necessarily critical, although very, very important. A lot of our parks and rec expenditures fall under other as well. Just because they're more amenity based, but they're definitely necessary. So that's what the other is for. We will certainly next year look at improving the transparency of what other means and we'll probably rename it.
Okay, miscellaneous would be a great term to use.
There you go. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Schaaf, before, when we're talking about these definitions and the other and, and not having that set. Really that category will always remain outside of the mandate, critical functions and obligations. However, we design that other category, but to your question about the equity piece, the equity lens is also applied to that category. The equity lens is not applied to critical mandate and obligations. So that is the chunk, much like the CIP where that equity lens and repeatable process and model, all of that passes through there as well. So it's really in alignment with the community goals. It's also in alignment with the, with, with council priorities. And that's where the additional funding, if we add anything, really it's, it's not reprioritizing, right? It's reallocating. So if we add something, something has to come off the list that we've already budgeted for, for 2025.
Great, thank you. So, so, and that kind of tees up my, my next question is there are projects included in the CIP list but are listed as those other, within the other category. I'm curious, how did these other projects get placed ahead of the mandates, critical need or obligation projects? Or even the other projects of the quote unquote other projects that are listed on there?
I will say that our team in budget has worked with the CIP team extensively over several, several months in the spring and early summer. And the prioritization that they've come up with is what you see tonight.
Mayor Protem, let me, can I clarify that? So is your, is your question, are you thinking that there are other critical mandates or obligations that aren't being funded because of the other category funding?
I, you know, I'd have to go back and look at that list, but I do believe that there are, there are projects in there that have, that have multi-year funding that is going to be needed. And there are other projects that are getting funding, you know, in more recent years.
As, as part of the process, when we review the CIP projects, we're not just looking, you know, the, the buckets are definitely a big piece of it. We're also looking at the capacity of the project management team. We're looking at the timing of when things need to go online and when construction can start on projects. And so we try to balance all of that out. So there might be a critical project that, you know, it's critical, so we need it. But we may not be ready to move on the actual construction or there's still work ahead of, of starting the project that needs to be done before we can move forward. So we, we keep those in mind. We work with the project teams, we work with the departments to make sure that we're keeping an eye on, on all of that and that we're moving things forward when they're ready and when we're able to actually complete those projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from council? I just wanted to make sure we answered the resident's question and clarified what those negative balances were. Do we have that slide? Where you saw it?
Yeah, I, I think it's slide 19, maybe 20. To answer, to answer his question, those negative balances are with the proposed rate increases that we have already. So I want to be fully transparent that those negatives, we're going to be So I want to be fully transparent that those negatives, we're going to be having some discussions in the future of, again, we will probably bond for some of that. But those are, those are with the proposed rate increases already in there when we look out to 2029. And that's why we wanted to show this particular slide out to 2029 because although we are making progress, there are still very much some issues coming up in the, in the future.
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Clark. All right. Any other questions before we move on? There being no further questions, the public hearing is closed. First is council's consideration of the city and county of Broomfield items. We'll start with proposed resolution number 2024-147 approving the Third Amendment to the 2024 Broomfield budget. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution number 2024-147 authorizing and approving the Third Amendment to the city and county of Broomfield budget for the year 2024.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Ward?
So moved.
Is there a second? Councilmember Winn?
I second this motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Nope. Okay. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Leslie, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously ten to zero. Next is council's consideration of proposed resolution number 2024-149 approving the 2025 Broomfield budget. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution number 2024-149 adopting the budget for the city and county of Broomfield for the fiscal year 2025 and appropriating sums of money.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Ward?
Second, or so moved.
You get the first one.
I'm a little ahead of myself. So moved.
Nice.
Can I second too?
We're gonna let Councilmember Winn do the second?
I will second this motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Marsh Holson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm offering an amendment to add $300,000 to the CIP budget for parks and rec to fund a park shelter structure in the Country Vista Park. Funds to be taken from the ending fund balance rather than from another CIP project.
All right. Thank you for the amendment. Is there a second? Councilmember Winn?
I second this motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? On the amendment? Councilmember Lim?
I have a question. Could staff ask, staff ask, staff or Mr., or Councilmember Marsh Holson could answer. There is a process that's reflected on the capital budget calendar where residents submit proposals for CIP projects in January. And then it goes through a review process during the year. Has this park upgrade and Country Vista gone through that CIP process?
We have somebody coming down to the podium to answer that? Couple of people, three? Whoever gets there first?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim, members of council, Clay Shug, Director of Operations. We did not receive a citizen CIP request for this in the formal sense. We did have one through an email. And we did consider that, but it didn't go through the formal process.
Didn't go through the formal process. And I, am I correct? It does not appear on the five-year plan. Is that correct?
Currently it does not appear on the five-year plan. That is correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Councilmember Henkel?
Thank you, Mayor. I would, I appreciate the amendment out of Ward One and I appreciate the idea, definitely. I think that there needs to be a better repeatable process for this. If we keep doing this on every budget amendment. And so I would request that the processes be followed for all wards for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah, I would just want to kind of second that, that thought here. I know that and I sort of had this discussion already with Councilmember Marsh Holson. And, and we're going a little bit different direction here, but I know of another community that would love to have a park sheltered. I feel like we're starting to legislate from the dais and picking these projects. And this is a much broader discussion. I'm not in favor of doing amendments this way to prioritize CIP projects. So I will be voting no. I'm not opposed to consideration of that project in the future. But we do have a process and we need to follow that process. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marsh Holson?
Mayor, this, yeah, this request came directly from the residents of that neighborhood. And I, I appreciate the conversation and the process that we have. I don't think the process is wrong. I think that, I mean, the, the repeatable process that staff goes through on the, on the budget items is appropriate at the staff level. I do think that the, we as council have the ultimate decision and I think it is appropriate for us to make changes if necessary. But, I mean, I, I'm definitely open to, to a further discussion to have larger, the larger conversation of the parks budget and, you know, what parks we need. So I'm obviously voting for this, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment on the floor? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote on the amendment. Council, please cast your vote on the amendment electronically. Councilmember Leslie, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I, I hit mine. Sorry. How do I undo that? Okay, there. So all council members have entered their vote. I don't know why I voted. It wasn't a tie. And the results will be displayed on the screen. That motion fails three to seven. So we'll go back to the discussion on the resolution as a whole. Is there any other discussion on resolution 2024-149? Seeing no further discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on resolution 2024-149. Council, please cast your vote electronically. And Councilmember Leslie, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
All right. All council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously ten to zero. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2253 amending water sewer and reclaimed water fees on second reading. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2253 amending Title 13 of the Broomfield Municipal Code to change water, wastewater and reclaimed wastewater fees and service charges.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title? Oh, you just did that. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance on second and final reading and order published? Councilmember Ward?
You have the brave soul that's motion, that, um, set motions.
You drive an RTV bus.
I've had a long, long, long weekend.
I don't know anyone braver. And second by Councilmember Winn?
I second this motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? See, Councilmember Marsh Holson?
Thank you, Mayor. I voted for this on first reading. This is probably something that we have to do. But it just doesn't sit right for me. We, this is a 50% increase for our residents and I don't know, council, this council has voted last two years to improve, to approve water rate increases. And each time staff presented us with the rate increase and we approved it. But coming back with another, another rate like this, it's just, it's too much. There's a whole lot of reasons why we got where we are, but I just, I just can't support this tonight. It's, there's not the transparency that we need. I know we did a bunch of meetings, but I have, I have more thoughts later on for different discussions, but I, I'm not going to support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henkel?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to thank staff and all of their hard work. I know that this isn't easy and it's not an easy subject. And I wanted to thank anyone who emailed in and voiced their opinion as well. We are listening. I just wanted to reflect a little bit on the study session we had with AECOM and staff and it's just, it's been a disappointment with the chasm of information not answered in regards to the formula and approach to this water rate increase. It seems like we know how much money we need to get to that end goal, but the math class isn't showing the work. Every year I've asked if we're keeping up with infrastructure needs and every year I've been told yes. We've always known that we need it. We are going to get to the population of at least 125,000. That's something I've always known ever since I've been on council in 2019. This year, and I've always voted for an increase in infrastructure and I've always been told, yes, we are keeping up with it. This year we are addressing not only infrastructure, but now stormwater costs are going to be added because that is something that our staff has missed in the past. I'm not comfortable voting yes on these rates and forcing our residents to become the bond bank of Broomfield when the issues we are addressing today should have been addressed much earlier and much more thoroughly. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I want to go back to the comment that Councilmember Cohen made at the last, the first reading of this. And he said, you know, like, we're looking, I looked at all the ways of possibly vote against this, but there's just not a way to vote against this. I want to use the word reckless. I emailed staff and asked some questions about what happens if this does not pass tonight. I think we need to remember that for years, Broomfield residents have been paying a substantially lower rate than what we actually needed. I don't think we fully understood how much our existing infrastructure, how much the repair, how much we really needed to put into that bucket for repairs. And I always thought this was a forward-looking that we needed towards development, but really the, the, as we're looking at this more in depth and, and this shortage of funds, it's existing infrastructure that has aged over time that we have not come up with. If we don't increase, and this is from staff, if we, if we do not pass this increase tonight, we're going to continue to increase that backlog and we're going to have, we're going to be forced into the situation of having to spend way more money on emergency projects, rather than just continuing that maintenance and keeping up our infrastructure. And we're going to be in a much worse place come around next year if we look at this again. So I, I wish there was a way to vote against it, but I would, I feel that would be reckless. And so I will be voting for this and and, and hopefully we get ahead of the, the infrastructure replacement and we actually don't have to keep seeing these increases. So I added that, I will be voting yes. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Anderson's use and I guess Councilmember Cohen's use the word reckless. I do think not approving these rate increases would be reckless. They are large increases. There's no doubt about that. Everyone's going to feel it, some a lot more than others. And yes, we do have further on the agenda assistance for those who are really going to feel this impact more so than other people who are far more well off in this community. I think to Councilmember Henkel's and Councilmember Marsh Holson's point, you know, we had a new team come in right before the pandemic in city leadership and then subsequently a few years later in the CIP, or I should say Public Works Department. And historically, based on what I have seen and what I have understood from our staff is senior leadership previously to what we currently have now typically played keep away with information. That's how I feel. And by not passing down that information to a succession plan did not set us up on the best course for success. Having a run to fail methodology for how we approach projects is not how responsible individuals and organizations approach large projects such as capital investment. If we vote, if this ultimately does not pass, we are going to continue down that path of run to fail, not being able to keep pace with infrastructure needs. And quite frankly, the subsidy for residents that they've been accustomed to since 2008 has run out. And there is no more subsidy. So I don't know what Councilmember Marsh Holson and Councilmember Henkel think is the best way to go forward with this if we don't approve these rate increases, but I think it's, it's reckless. So I will be voting for it.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Winn?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I just want to, you know, again emphasize that we've heard the reports that, and, you know, the presentations. If we don't pass this, this is like a doomsday kind of scenario where we could potentially not have drinkable water within eight years in certain, certain areas of our communities. So I feel like, yes, this is a very difficult, you know, ordinance that we have to go through. This is a tough pill we have to kind of take, but the, the long-term effects of this of not passing it would be detrimental to Broomfield. It would be catastrophic if we don't have drinking water and eventually the money's going to dry out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? First round, Mayor Pro Tim Schaaf?
All right, thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to echo some public comment that we heard earlier about specifically thanking individual staff for your efforts on this. It starts at the top, you know, city and county manager Hoffman, you know, Ken Rutt, Mr. Graham, your contributions to this conversation and, and helping to get, to right the ship to where we are. This is, this is a major move for the city and county of Broomfield to right our future to ensure that we have a sustainable future, especially around our water enterprise fund. So thank you for your efforts in this. This was not an easy shift to make, but I look back at the historical context with our water and Broomfield was, you know, got a major opportunity back in the 2000s to right our water future. And again, we've gotten that opportunity again to make sure that we have a sustainable future. So thank you for your efforts to make sure that we are much better footing next year than we are today. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen?
I'll be quick. I don't really have anything different from what I commented at the last meeting in terms of, as what Councilmember Anderson referenced, but I did want to just pass a word of caution that from what I've heard from constituents is that we need to have some rebuilding in confidence in what we're doing. When we have a master plan one year replaced less than nine months later with a new plan with more increases and staff continue to tell us we're prudent and congratulate ourselves on how well we're financially managing. There's a disconnect, I think, in how we're communicating with our residents. So I think there needs to be some acknowledgement of that. And I think we've referenced that, you know, in the past, things haven't been done quite the way they should have been done. We've been enjoying a long period of time with very low water rates and we no longer can sustain that. Fortunately, our water rates are now in the middle and our neighbors not at the top. So it's maybe a little more easier to swallow, so to speak. But it's still a difficult, you know, the $40 a month increase is a financial hardship for a lot of people. And such a sudden increase does not suggest prudent management. So I think in the year ahead, we need to do more work to rebuild confidence from, I think, from some members of this council and definitely in some of my constituents and show, show our work, as I think Councilmember Henkel said, to reach that end. I will support this because as I said, there really isn't a much other choice in terms of future infrastructure. We have to make these investments now. I wish they could be done on a less steep of a curve of increase. I am glad and it's still on the agenda that we are targeting aid to help those who can least afford it. So I think we're being at least compassionate and proactive and making sure the people who, who are most harmed by this have some relief. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other first round discussion? I just want to go back to when I first got on city council in 2017 and we would review the water rates annually and it was like 1%, 2% increase and everybody was bragging about how we had some of the cheapest water around and we were, you know, and pounding their chest that we didn't have to raise the rates. And now I'm sitting here going, yeah, now we're paying for it. We got bargain water for a long time, bargain sewer for a long time and being the lowest rates of any city around might have been great for political expediency back then, but it does might have been great for political expediency back then, but it does come time that, you know, it catches up with you, and it caught up now. So that's my, my experience in seven years watching this, that what they were doing wasn't what was recommended. They were deliberately not making the recommended increases for political expediency, or as some would call it, reckless. Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. I will always believe that legislating with a gun to my head, with the doom and gloom scenario, is bad governance. I don't believe that we should be doing that. I think it's bad for the residents. As to what I would recommend, I recommend going back to the drawing board and starting this process again. And the residents brought a lot of ideas, and none of them have made it into the final draft. I don't have the answer. I'm not an expert in water rates. I don't have the answer. I just, I believe that there has to be a way that we could ease this in for the residents much better than a 50% jump in one year. So that's where I'm at tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on ordinance number 2253. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Leslie, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Oh, I hit it again. I'm not you. All council members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes 8 to 2. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2255, creating a stormwater enterprise and setting stormwater service charges on second reading. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2255, amending Title III and Title 13 of the Broomfield Municipal Code to establish a stormwater utility enterprise, set monthly stormwater service charges, and establish a 10% state and local revenue cap as required by Tabor for all enterprises.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance on second and final reading and order published? Councilmember Ward.
Let's try this again. So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Winn?
I second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also going to oppose this tonight. One of the ideas that I brought forward was that we not have the stormwater fee and just pay for it out of general fund revenues, continue paying for it out of general fund revenues. I still believe that's a better course of action, so I will not be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on ordinance number 2255. Council, please cast your vote electronically. And Councilmember Leslie, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All council members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes 8 to 2. Now we'll move to the Broomfield Urban Renewal Authority budget items. First is borough's consideration of the proposed revised 2024 budget. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution number 2024-148-U-R, authorizing and approving the Third Amendment to the Broomfield Urban Renewal Authority budget for the year 2024.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Degadio.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Ward.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, borough members, please cast your vote electronically. And Authority Member Leslie, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
And Authority Member Goldstein, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All borough members have entered their vote, and there is, oh, no, not yet, almost. Borough Member Cohen. Not working? You want to give me a verbal? Yes, okay. Thank you. And all borough members have entered their vote. The results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously 11 to 0. Next is borough's consideration, oh darn it, of a resolution approving the 2025 Broomfield Urban Renewal Authority budget. Is that right? My script went crazy. Okay. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution number 2024-150-U-R, adopting the budget for the Broomfield Urban Renewal Authority for the fiscal year 2025 and appropriating sums of money.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Marsh Holson.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Winn?
Seconded.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Borough, please cast your vote electronically. Authority Member Leslie, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Authority Member Goldstein, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All borough members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously 11 to 0. Next is the Arista Local Improvement District's consideration of the 2025 budget. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution number 2024-151-AID, adopting the budget for the Arista Local Improvement District for the fiscal year 2025 and appropriating sums of money.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Ward.
So moved.
Is there a second? Councilmember Degadio.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Arista Local Improvement District members, please cast your vote electronically. Member Leslie, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously 10 to 0. All right. The next item this evening is a proposed resolution related to the creation of a utility rate assistance fund program. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor. And making her way down to the podium is Vivian Del Pizzi. She is our Housing Programs Manager. She's going to walk us through this item. They've done a lot of works and subsequent to our last council meeting.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem. Vivian Del Pizzi with the Housing Division. I'm here to talk about the Utility Rate Assistance Fund Program. So the Utility Rate Assistance Fund will set aside a portion of the base rate for the utilities to assist households who are income eligible. Those households would be up to 100% of the area median income for Broomfield. The maximum amount of assistance would be $250, and the, would serve approximately 12,500 households. The program would be administered by the Housing Division. We expect to hire two temporary full-time employees for about six months to provide support to our residents. We'll be using the same software program that we currently use for a partial property tax refund program to make the, the application process as easy as possible for our residents. The total cost of this Utility Rate Assistance Fund is estimated at $2.1 million for 2025. This is not currently in the 2025 budget. It would be bringing, it would be brought to council by finance and the First Amendment at the beginning of the year. The program will open to the public on January 22nd, since we expect those increases to hit in January of next year, and it will close on September 30th. The households can qualify regardless if they are renters or homeowners. The main difference would be how they will receive that credit back. So if they are homeowners, they will see a quarterly credit on their utility bill. If they are currently renters or their bills are being paid by a landlord, they will get a check mailed directly to them quarterly as well. As you can see in the slide, on the second column is the amount that we are expecting the utility rates to go up monthly per type of household. And on the third column is how much they would be reimbursed by half of that increase. The annual amount is $240 for single-family homes, $216 for duplexes or townhomes, and $204 for apartments or condominiums. In order to qualify for the Utility Rate Assistance Funds, we have to qualify per income since we are building that gap of 100% of the area median income. So residents would have to provide a proof of income for every household member 18 or older, a proof of ID, and proof of residency. Again, we are trying to make this process as easy as possible for residents to apply and not burden them with the application. Next. We already have a communication plan that we are working on that would be finalized by the end of November on how to reach Broomfield residents in order to know information about the program, how to apply, more details. We'll be sending out notices on the utility bills. We'll be advertising and be in the loop, video streaming in the lobby, social medias, coordinating with community partners, booths at city events. We also expect to have walking consultations like we did for the partial property tax program, one-on-one appointments here in the city. So really making sure that every resident that potentially qualifies is able to apply for the program. We'll have applications both online, but also in person in case residents don't have access to internet or how to apply. Next. This pretty much sums up my presentation. The action needed from council if council desires to proceed with this Utility Rate Assistance Program to approve Resolution Number 2024-165. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. We will now proceed with public comments, starting with in-person. If there is anyone who would like to be heard, please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. Please leave your comments to three minutes.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Potem and council. John Ewalt Pinnacle North. Councilmember Ward said that this is there for those that really need it. And at first reading, we saw a resident who definitely is going, really, really needs this. But I don't understand why this is at 100% of AMI, which we've been told is, is above $100,000. That doesn't seem like someone who really needs it. And it's only subsidizing half. Why not, if everyone's okay with spending that much money, why not take the, the lowest of the low, the people who really are going to need support for this and subsidize the whole thing? I don't understand why we're, why this is including 100% of AMI. And then if we're getting to the actual cost of $2 million or 2.1 million, I think there was a proposal that was going to provide relief for every resident that was about the same. And this council as a, as a whole voted not to do that. So I don't know if that was for funding or if they just didn't want to provide funding for people who they think don't need help. But it was about the same, same dollar value, and that wasn't approved. So I'm not sure why this is being proposed this way. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me, and it's not helping those that actually really need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Roxy Julah Lacamoire. Did I read that right, that it said 100% AMI? Is that right? What are you thinking? Why are you raising the bill if you're going to go ahead and pay a portion of everybody's bill? 20% AMI, I don't mind. Because there's a lot of people out there that do not need the help that are going to go ahead and put in for it. I don't know what you're thinking and where you think you get the money because you're stealing from Peter to pay Paul. So you're getting money from one other department to pay for this raise in the utilities that you're mandating, and now you're going to give money away? What are you thinking? You're not taking care of Broomfield at all. You're wasteful on money. That's my opinion.
Thank you. We will now proceed with public comments on, on the phone. Or do we have anybody join via phone? Okay. Questions from council are next. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. The time to introduce amendments and stated positions for or against this item is later. Are there any questions? Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I have a couple of questions. I'll start off with, how did we come up with 40 bucks a month for a single-family, 34 for a multifamily, and then whatever the difference was for townhomes and...
Thank you, Councilmember Ward. Those, those are the increases each month for those related classes. So a single-family would be $40. The other ones would be lower because the stormwater fee would be lower.
Okay. I guess, because I know the answer. I guess my question is that $40, let's just take a single-family home, for example. That $40 a month is roughly the increase we are proposing, or we just voted on, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. So since we haven't provided a subsidy in the past, I think just subsidizing the rate increase seems reasonable. My next question goes towards communication, specifically renters who live in large apartment complexes. You know, that's most of Ward, too. Is there any intended outreach directly to, let's say, the property management companies themselves, so they can send out an email or put up a newsletter or whatever each property does? So that way, you're directly getting to those residents.
Absolutely.
Okay. Great. And then I guess my last question is, for the application period, it's January through September. If someone, let's say, figures out that they income qualify in June, and they've lived in Broomfield since January, are they able for, I guess, a retroactive subsidy, or is it just going forward after the application?
Thank you for that question. It's retroactively. So if they apply in June, and they have lived in that address since January, they will receive either a credit or a check for that whole amount until June, and then moving forward quarterly.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mayor Castriata.
Thank you. I wanted to clarify. So when we talk about average median income, is that the whole household's income?
The area median income, yes, that's correct. So it's based on how many people live in the household and how many members of the household that are older than 18 that contribute to the household income.
Okay. So up to three people, four, when we say AMI?
It really varies on the household sides. So for example, a household at 100% AMI that has four people living in it, the maximum amount they can make is $130,400 for four people.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions on this item? Seeing none. Next is council's consideration of proposed Resolution Number 2024-165. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution number 2024-165, approving the creation of the Utility Rate Assistance Fund URAF program.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Ward.
So moved.
Is there a second? Councilmember Winn?
I second this motion.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. There was a comment by a resident about why we're going up to 100% AMI. And I'll give you my, my example. So I have a household of one, an apartment. My increase for the water is going to go up 34 bucks a month, according to the, the chart. And I make roughly $75,000 a year. I exceed the 80% AMI for Broomfield County for a one-person household. However, I have cushion for about 80 bucks a month in my budget. And I know there are many people in my situation. Now luckily, I'm in college, law school, so I'm getting student loans that are offsetting that cost. So I personally will not feel this quite the same way that other residents do. But I do know there are residents in my ward who are in that same situation, making more than the 80% AMI, but don't have that cushion that some other residents, quite frankly, in Broomfield do. So going up to 100% AMI does offer that cushion for those who are in that fun little gap of you make too much for this one, but you don't make enough to really make ends meet. So that is why we are going for 100% AMI, and that's why I will be voting for it.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I have the opposite perspective. I was supportive of the 60% AMI. I know it raised my concerns, and I kind of felt better about it, thinking, well, we can reevaluate this at the end of the year. I still feel that I'm going to vote against this tonight, probably in the minority here. But... But if, if we have all these residents, which is nearly half of Broomville households, you know, accept this, um, relief, then we're undoubtedly going to see further increases in the future. I, I would rather just, um, try to reduce the mon, increases in the future and not provide relief to half the residents. So I, I wish we could go back down to the 60% AMI, really focus where the need is greatest. So I will vote against this and I would love to propose an, um, an amendment, but I, if there's, if there's support for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Um, now that the water rates have increased, I wholeheartedly support this program. I appreciate my colleagues, um, uh, bringing, you know, making sure this is on the agenda and bringing this forward and pushing for this. You know, it's going to be tough for families. A $40 increase is a lot for a lot of people. My family and I, we can absorb it. There was a time though, not long, not long, not that long ago, that it would have meant less food for my family. Um, so there is definitely, um, need for this. And, and to the question, um, median income is 130,000. That seems like a lot, but we have to remember that the average home price in Broomfield is over 600,000, which given current interest rates is probably about a $4,000 a month payment. So even if you're making $10,000 a month, your home value, that your home, mortgage payment is, you know, almost half of your, of your income. So this is definitely a, a need. We did talk about maybe doing a graduated where we did more for low, lower income and less for higher income. But at least at the initial, this initial time, I don't think we should do that just because the administrative burden that that would place is much. We, and we won't know what, what, what the need is yet. I mean, after a year, we look at this program, we reevaluate it. If, if we see the, you know, the numbers are there, we can adjust it. So I do support this going forward right now, and I think it will benefit a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lim.
I don't have too much to add. I just do, I do think this is, could be a sudden jolt to even middle, some middle-income earners. And I support this at this point in time and I am, um, open to the possibility of adjusting the program in the future after we get some further data on the applicants. And we discussed last time in the first reading that we would like a breakdown of, um, percentage AMIs who apply. And, um, so that would be helpful for future decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henkel.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Potem. While I support this because I didn't support the increase, I felt like it was too much all at one time with not enough, um, backing and supporting it. I think, um, while I, I will support this, I think this is the canary in the coal mine for a lot of the money that we're pulling in and then we're also giving a lot back. And so I'm worried that now we are, um, creating this sort of programming where it might not be sustainable. We're always creating these programs that are asking for more money to create these bonds and to have that, that sustenance, right? But at the same time, we're also giving money back. So it's almost like we're going 10 feet forward and going about eight steps back. And so I, that's my concern. This, um, if this is indicative of what's going to happen to other programming in the future, um, then I have concerns that this will continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other further comments on this issue? Uh, I do have a question, uh, for clarification from staff. Um, so when we're talking about households, uh, served with this potential problem, uh, program, you talked about 12,500 households. Um, how many households are there in Broomfield? About 33,000 or so? 33,000. So about a third of the households in Broomfield would be served by this program. So I just wanted to clarify that. Um, for me, you know, I believe that the AMI should have been limited to 60% AMI, um, you know, but, you know, council directed staff to bring back the program at 100% AMI. I don't know if that's going to be the, the, the right, um, right direction, but I do believe that, uh, getting this program up and running is the right direction, uh, and so I will support it. I do hope that, uh, we will evaluate it in a year from now, um, so that we, uh, do ensure that we, uh, have data, uh, to, to get the metrics and measurements, uh, out of this that we need to see if this is successful. Uh, so I will be supporting it tonight. Thank you. Uh, with that, all right, I gotta get to my other screen. Uh, thanks. Um, council, please cast your vote electronically. Uh, Councilmember Leslie, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
And all councilmembers have entered their vote. The results will now be displayed on the screen. That passes nine to one.
All right. I'll take back.
All right.
All right. There are no requests for future action this evening. Is there any other business to come before the council from my colleagues or staff? There being no further business, the business meeting, the borough meeting and the ALID,[1794.42]